Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Commissioner Meeting 5522. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've approved the minutes from the April 21st meeting in the Council of Cable Vouchers and Payroll Docket.
I move to approve the minutes from the April 21st meeting in the Council of Cable Vouchers and Payroll Docket as presented.
Questions or comments? If not, all present say aye.
Aye.
Cable Advisory Board Appointment. Know all you men by these presents that the duly elected, qualified, and acting Commissioners of Jefferson County, Indiana, do hereby appoint Lori Hedges as a member of the Cable Advisory Board. This term will expire on December 31st, 2022, and witness whereof I have here in two set my hand this fifth day of May, 2022.
Any second then?
Questions or comments? All present say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori, for being volunteer. I'm a volunteer.
In case you didn't know, I was already on the board. I'm just moving from Pinewood to County.
And we've got our second reading of our Health and Human Relations Commission here. Well, we'll change it up. I'll do the first one. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners establishing the Jefferson County Health and Human Relations Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County wishes to establish a Health and Human Relations Commission to support the promotion and development of a community which functions as one with equality and dignity for each citizen of Jefferson County and now therefore be it resolved. Section 1, Health and Human Relations Commission. It is the desire of Jefferson County, Indiana, to promote public health, welfare, and security. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners now establishes the Jefferson County Health and Human Relations Commission to promote positive human relations, respect, and the integrity of every individual. Section 2, Number and Appointment of Commission. The commission shall consist of seven members. All appointees to the commission should represent community members who are engaged in promoting health and/or anti-discrimination in the community. All appointees must be residents of Jefferson County. A, Initial Membership. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint four commission members, one of whom shall be designated as Board of Commissioners appointee to serve an initial two-years term. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint three members, one of whom shall be designated as Board of Commissioners appointee to serve an initial one-year term. Ongoing Membership. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint two Board of Commissioners appointee members following the completion of a term or having vacancy. The remaining five commission members will be nominated by the existing commission members to the Board of Commissioners for appointment following the completion of a term or a vacancy, and members will serve two-year terms. Section 3, Commission Nominations. Each nomination made by the commission shall consider all applicants, applications received or at least two weeks before appointment. Attempt to nominate member of the community to create a commission that is reflective of the demographics and culture of Jefferson County, including comprehensive representation of age, gender, socioeconomic status, ethnic background, culture, and religion. And 3, consider the prospective commission members' knowledge, experience, and cause of tension and conflict. Prospective member shall have demonstrated a commitment to fostering better human relations in Jefferson County, public notice, and shall be given on when the commission intends to nominate members to the commission. Any application form shall be accessible by the public as required by law. A record shall be kept of all applications filed for one year. Section 4, Term of Office. Each commission member shall serve a two-years. Section 5, Vacancies. A vacancy shall occur on the happening of any of the following events before the expiration of the term: death of the incumbent, resignation of the incumbent, removal at the pleasure of the appointing or nominating authority, four, ceasing of the incumbent to be a resident of Jefferson County, or five, incumbent's absence from more than one-third of the regularly scheduled meetings in any twelve months, or three consecutive regular meetings; when a vacancy occurs as a result of missing one-third of regular scheduled meetings in one twelve-month period, or three consecutive regular meetings. Vacancies shall be filled by the applicable nominating or appointing authority specified in Section 2. Section 6, Organization. 1. Officers. The commission shall select annually from its membership a chairperson and a vice-chairperson, and any other officers it deems necessary. 2. Rules. The commission shall prepare and adopt the necessary rules and regulations for the conduct of its business. These rules and regulations are to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. 3. Quorum. A majority of members currently appointed to the commission shall constitute a quorum. A majority of members shall be required to carry any motion or proposal. 4. Minutes. The commission shall keep written minutes of its meetings, a copy of which shall be filed with the Secretary of the Board and the Board of Commissioners. 5. Meetings. The commission shall establish a regular meeting schedule and shall give public notice of the time and place of meetings. All meetings of the commission, including any ad hoc committees or other committees appointed by the commission, shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the commission, including any ad hoc committees or other committees appointed by the commission. Location of commission meetings, including those of any ad hoc committees or other committees appointed by the commission, shall be determined with consideration for equal and fair access for persons residing in all areas of the county, and for geographical, social, or economical interest in matters to be considered at particular meeting. Section 7, Establishment of Committees. Ad hoc Committees. The commission may appoint committees to carry out the functions and duties of the commission. Any committee appointed shall consist of not fewer than three members, including at least one commission member. The actions and recommendations of committees shall not be deemed the action of the commission and shall in no way bind the Commissioners or its members. The committee shall cease to exist on completion of its assignment.
2. Volunteer and Consultant Services. The commission may benefit from the services of volunteer workers and volunteer consultants who serve without compensation or reimbursement of expenses. Service from an individual as a volunteer worker or volunteer consultant shall not be considered as service for or employment by the county. Compensation. Section 8, Compensation. Members of the commission shall receive no compensation. Section 9, Duties and Responsibilities. Within ninety days of all members of the commission being appointed and confirmed, the commission members shall draft and approve by simple majority the duties and responsibilities of the commission, subject to the approval by the Board of Commissioners. Said duties and responsibilities may be updated or amended as needed by simple majority vote at a thirty-day notice meeting, subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Section 10, Non-County Funding. The commission may, with the approval of the Board of Commissioners, apply for donations, grants, or other funding from public or private sources to provide for program costs of the commission.
Okay, we've read this ordinance.
I make a motion since we've had no objections or anything in public that we... Let's get to the third reading and approve this tonight.
Comments or questions here? So all present say aye.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to the Board of Commissioners establishing the Jefferson County Health and Human Relations Commission.
Any comments or questions? All present say aye.
I'll go first because I've got no meeting at 5:30. I'll be fashionably late for already. I don't have a whole lot tonight, so I'll be shorter than I was last time. How's that? I know it's been, I'm going to say it's been long overdue. You guys probably haven't recognized the amount of time that's lapsed since we originally put out our request for proposals for our bridge inspection, but I know there's at least three consultants represented in this room that's kind of been waiting for this because I wasn't allowed to go forward even though we got the ranking done. I want to say that was before the calendar flipped and we started into the new year before I actually got the... It was in October. I knew it'd been a long time. It's been there. I think I continued to get lost and ended up multiple times because I resubmitted all of my paperwork at least third or fourth time because, yeah, long story short, I did finally get to go ahead to let everyone know that United Consulting was our highest ranking firm, and they will start their bridge inspection and stuff here in November is our compliance month, so we will be entering into the contract phase of that, and I certainly want to again thank all those that put in for that, that being in no specific order here, United Consulting, USI, SJCA, FSNF, BSNF, JSE, JTNL, BLN. So I greatly appreciate each and every one of their interests. We have continued working on getting our ropes ready, working on a lot of the drainage projects ahead of the community crossing projects, as well as some of the local paving projects. I hesitate, so I'm trying to figure out how to put this plot. We had an individual that didn't really believe the rope was closed and thought he could ride it forward through about a six-foot trench, and he didn't make that. Luckily, he didn't get hurt. They wondered if he wasn't... I'd better just stop there. So I asked him why they didn't just go ahead and call the police, but I don't think that has any cell phone service in that spot. The rope really was closed, so yeah, I know we all kind of experience delays when we run into those construction zones, and we're all in construction season, so just wanted to remind everybody to be careful out there, pay attention to signs, and try to be courteous to everybody. That's all I've got. You guys have anything for me before I hit the road?
Be careful. Thank you.
I'll do my best. Thank you, guys.
Mr. P. Roy. Bobby was shorter, so this time it's gonna be a little longer this time. A couple of different things that stem back to when we were remodeling 620 Green Road for its current purpose. One of those things which was on the list back at the time, but for whatever reason we didn't do this, that is one section of the gutters in the back of the building. That's not the worst section, that's not the best section, but that's one of several sections all the way around the building. But we've known that it needed to be done, and I think with the pandemic, we just kind of put it off to the side and slipped, and every time it rains or snows, the overflow is what brings it back to our attention, so it's got to be on the side of the building. So there's three separate quotes there, cheapest of those being $5,410, and the most expensive being $6,735, but that includes the removal, the installation of new, and also includes the gutter guards that are around the building as well. So I'd like to present that to you guys for your consideration. The middle one, actually, the total does not reflect the gutter guard, so that 3,042 should be plus to 2471 to make it equal to the other two. 6413.
If it's running over, it's probably cycling back into the rest of it.
It's coming back and hit the soffit and then drip it off the soffit and run it down the front and the side and the back of the building places. Not everywhere in that places.
I make a motion that we approve the 5410 to Candy Makers to take care of the guttering and that's gutter guards also, right?
Yes.
620 Green Road, Ian Makers.
It's got 630.
This is real. Was not Bobby's 640.
I didn't do it. I didn't do it.
I didn't even touch it six times. No, it doesn't.
The last one just put Green Road.
Yeah, there you go.
If you're second. As long as it's at 620 Green Road, I second. I'm on about 630.
I like the idea of six inches left.
Right. It's got the five inch on the other end.
Yeah.
Which is pretty much standard, I think, anyway.
All right. Any more discussion or questions or comments? If not all, those in favor say aye.
Well, that's kind of why I'm here, because it's out of the scope of my budget, so thank you, though. Also out of the scope of my budget.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have? Well, let me just wait. Thoroughly enough together, shouldn't be so.
In my defense, I did check. I said that before.
You've done the background.
I did, yeah, I did. I did.
What's your...
So the second project is part of the renovation. We installed the radio tower for 911, and that installation of the actual steel was done on a rainy day with a all-wheel-drive, knobbed tire land lift, and they damaged the turf of, you know, it's been around the back of the building. There's still several ruts that have been filled in with trap wood and whatever else, you know, we filled in to get the mower out of there and whatnot, but the water standing back there is getting worse, and the erosion is because of the standing water, and to make a long story short, we just need to have that repaired and that brush removed from the edge and then have that seed and straw dressed out after those, it's been repaired. So this is for that particular project, to have that groundwork done. And the cheapest of those three is $1,100, and the most expensive is $2,400 of the three. And they're all essentially, we'll send them up here. So repair, fill in the damaged ground, and then it will make sure that the drainage is still the way it's supposed to be, where it went off. We've already got the ground marked, and all the estimates were done based on the utility location, so everybody knows what they're dealing with, so there's no surprises at the end. And then seed and straw, dress it up.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, I had to do it this way.
Those guys know where they are.
Mild excavation.
Any kind of installation of a major, maybe, that's all.
They have the phone number on that front. Eight one two eight one eight five nine nine two. Must be overseas. Unless we need weather, weather permitting.
Right.
It says something about a 20% increase for any unseen until so many days pass, you know.
I, when I asked, when we were discussing it with all the vendors and all the contractors, you know, we talked about they didn't think it would be, it would take a very long, more than a couple of days to do it. They all have packed schedules and don't know how quickly, you know, they could get to it, so, but I don't know that as far as any increase in price based on how long they make us wait, I mean, I would argue with them. We were ready when we, if you approved it, we were ready when you approved it, and how long they waited is up to that. Like I said, it looks bad, but that aside, I mean, the standing water back there is a problem, it's a hazard, it's, it's just making, making a bad situation worse. Well, the water that comes off of the damaged gutters and downspouts has nowhere to go other than the standing pool that's already there anyway because of the damage from the installation of the tower, so this will really clean that up and dress it up right there and get that water covered.
I move we accept the earth shaping LLC bid of $1,100 for mild excavation and creating some of the yard and the seed and straw for $1,100.
Second, take a motion. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Sarah again.
Sarah says we're still in there. I'm sorry.
She's like someone.
The last thing that I have for you is Pat McGrath got the zoning applications back for review, so I've got copies of those for you guys to take a look at when and if you guys are ready to move that forward. It'll just require a signature before they can be filed at City Hall. Not asking for anything tonight. You can pick that up at your advisement, review it, whatever you want to do with it, but cut that back from Pat, the end of, right after the last, the last meeting, so I want to bring that to you and get that together, and if you want to know how you want to proceed after you've got a chance to go in here. That's all I've got. Any questions or anything for me?
No, just thanks for, remember I asked you guys about getting radios for the county? I sure got two radios up on the 800, and so the guys were out on Scotts Ridge on a call, then snow removal or something was bad, so they had an issue, they've still got contact with this, but so.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll be able to find them. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a happy, should, so.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, I was just going to bring up that Jefferson County is a broadband-ready community, and what that means is we are having conversations, we're having meetings with different network providers in the area. Some of those network providers have already been given funds for the second or third time around for broadband-ready communities. You guys haven't passed some ordinance saying that we are ready. Now we have a tab on the website that people can go to, thanks to Sarah. It's very, very organized. It looks fantastic. SIRPC has what they call a fellow, a broadband fellow, and that, that individual will help all of the southeastern counties with following the correct steps because this is new to everyone. So the first step was getting that ordinance. Now the second steps are having real conversations with the network providers in our areas on what, where they plan to expand, what they're expecting from you guys as community leaders, just anything that's an open conversation. Those aren't public meetings because we really want them to just talk to us, our task force, and tell us what they're expecting. So we've, we've had a couple of those meetings, and they've went really well. When you go to the Jefferson County website, though, there will be a spot that you'll find that says the Indiana Farm Bureau Internet Speed Test. It is so important that we can get people in the community to participate with that speed test at multiple times during the day. If you can do a speed test in the morning and maybe then do a speed test in the afternoon and in the evening, that would be even better because that gives data back. It will put a little pinpoint on a map of our county and will tell Indiana Farm Bureau what kind of upload and download speed you have. The state wants, you know, everyone to have a certain level of internet speed, and sometimes they don't get the correct factual information on how much internet speed some of these individuals are having. So this, this is the best way for us to get the best data. When we have the best data, then we can apply for the best grants and get funding to help us with this project because it's, it's a big project. It's not going to be something that just happens like that, but the state is trying to help rural communities create broadband as a utility instead of just a extra feature because now we live in a society where if you don't have internet, you are struggling. So there's lots of ways in our county that people can get internet, and I don't think that that's something that everyone in the county is familiar about. So all this information, all these facts and stuff about broadband in our community is now on the website. My contact information is there because I am the county ambassador. Also, the contact, Rupisha Rutter, is our SIRPC Digital Inclusion Fellow. So, you know, if anybody has any questions about this, the project that we're working on, look at the website now that Sarah created because it's great.
I think we just, the county got some, or the provider in the northeast part got some funds in this most recent.
Yes.
Current cycle, didn't they?
Yes, I don't have...
I don't know if that was just the RMC that we'd already kind of talked with, but it didn't see.
I don't think it was just RMC. There's another local network provider as well, and I, I have been speaking with so many different people, I don't want to misspeak and say the wrong company, but there are two that service our area, I know for sure, that did get funding.
It's going to be, like you said, it's not going to be an overnight thing, but...
No.
In probably that area of the county is not, just because of geography, it's harder, harder to get stuff.
Yeah, there's, I think the, there's a, I think, if you look at a map right now, the areas that are very underserved as far as internet, that would be the southern, the southwestern portion, kind of the Chelsea area. Then you've got the far west portion, which would be the deputy area, and then we've got the far east area, kind of northeast, the Mandel, Berksville area, so it's a process, and that's why we're having these conversations because, you know, there's some counties that have had a lot of road work, and so because they had a lot of road work and there's a lot of ditch, ditch digging that took place, then you have internet providers that, oh, well, you're, you've already got the ditch here, we'll just lay some lines down. That works great, well, that can happen. That works great, well, that can happen. So it, it just requires a lot of communication throughout the community. It's going good so far.
Good for the steps.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Got one coming up, Jim. Next week.
I think so. It's not your public, it's just the task force.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'll talk to you at the meeting, make sure you guys have those.
Heather.
I would say Tuesday, May 10th, taxes are due. Just a friendly reminder.
Oh, joy.
Yeah, we have been busy with taxing questions and issues. So we've been working through all those. Everything seems to be going well, though.
Not the free to.
Sarah, come here for us. Bobby. They had our Public Defender Board meeting yesterday. And I'll just be short and sweet. The county gets 40% reimbursement for the public defender expenses. And I'm happy to say, money received from this 2021 was $259,494. That the county has not had. So it's going along very nicely. So kudos to everybody involved in this. That's it?
So on the 9th of May, we are to receive responses about the stormwater master plans. We should be getting responses from that. And that will probably get awarded towards the end of May. And we did send out the, yeah, the 22nd of April, the request for qualifications for the airfield study. So that's, those responses aren't due back until the 20th of May. Getting those back, kind of start those discussions. See what, what level of interest we have and kind of. The stormwater master plan is pretty, pretty well set up. It's not a lot of unknowns. There's, there's already an ordinance out there that's been developed that LTAP has. We can start with that and make some development there. And I think which consultant will help us decide, well, yeah, that's something important the county should have. Yeah, that's probably more of a city-related thing. So not necessarily something that, you know, some people have talked about, do you want to do a plan for the whole county? I don't know that you want to, that we get very, very, too much for what this is. We just wanted to kind of be infrastructure paperwork-wise set up so we can handle stormwater issues as they come along. It's going to take people coming to the Blue Ridge Board, which we established to handle those issues rather than mapping out the areas where there are issues with this effort. The airfield study, that'll give us some opportunity to kind of, it, it's not as detailed in what we want. We just want to know those guys that do the study and give us a chance to kind of lay out what kind of study and how we want to kind of structure it. So, you know, there's some things that early on, if it's, it doesn't look like it's possible because of, I've been told sometimes airspace, although it's going to be hard to get airspace and it's not something we're going to be able to get, get cleared, well, maybe it's not worth going on. But there's probably going to be some hurdles. See what those hurdles are and how easy or how difficult it would be to get over those. But, you know, we can structure a study to, if it's, if things look good, we can check out all boxes and we can keep going. But if not, we can stop and say, well, that pretty much is it. End our chances of going forward. So continue with the study. But time's up.
Give a quick update, the jail project. It's actually a little bit ahead of schedule, proceeding nicely. Steel cells are in Georgia, ready to be shipped. And I think they're supposed to be here the 16th of May. It'll be about a three-day bring, unload, and bring them in, stitch up, and put them together.
Number 37.
Seven truckloads, yes. It'll kind of be something to whip.
Round the front.
Yeah, come in, drop them off, and go right on out. But a bit of the roofing's up, it's, it'll start to take shape.
August 7th. We got the letter, turned out all this.
I guess that you mentioned that there's another county that didn't act on it. And now the state is building their jail. So it was like twice as much as once.
We were warned.
We did well, considering nobody wanted to do it, but had been.
Well, the only thing I have is May 19th is the next commissioner meeting, which will be up at the 620 Green Road, Jefferson County Public Safety Center, where our EMA and our 911 is in a very nice meeting room. Before that meeting at four o'clock, will be the residential treatment train process meeting again. Couple of guests. Pretty sure Abby Young Clark from the Attorney General's office. She's had her last night, she will be back. She's been offering and giving us ideas on financing the grants over there, Mary. She, like you, like you work on with SIRPC. Just some hope for things, some lilies and different grants that we'll be able to look at, too. Anybody wants to kind of let me, Bob's been coming, so he, some updates in the paper. Appreciate that. Troy's letting us use the building. Appreciate that. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Trip to the Jackson County?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Four of us went to Jackson County Jail a couple of weeks ago and looked at their, what is called MRT. Treatment process they had in their jail is pretty fascinating. They had six men in it to listen to their testimonies. It would be nice to have something like that in our new jail where we can get these guys rehab. And Jackson County has a work release program in Seymour. So they, it's all courts in conjunction. Once they get to the point where they can get out of the holding place there, they can go to work release and then they get out of the county and the city there around Seymour. Seymour is a, I guess, welcomed work release program very well. And these men work. So, I mean, that's something that we should be looking at to put in our, our jail or rehab. We need to be doing something. I know they, they needed to go on, but we had 100, we have 109 capacity, we have 178. Last Saturday night, we went in-house, 57 farmed out. A lot of people already, when they build a new jail, we're going to stick 250 and 300 bed jail. And we've had several outstanding cases that were put off for COVID that are just now coming to trial. So there's a lot. Rehab is, is a big deal. And I work with a man who was, who died twice on, on meth and brought back. And he's been through rehab over in the Carroll County area. And he's a great man to work with. So I look forward to, if we get 10 people and we can get one to work like he does, I, I, it would just, it would just bless me to know that we're doing that here in this county. If he's, if he's been back to the, he's got his family back. I don't know, that's pro con. How many kids you guys have? Anyway, he's got them all back. He lost all of his kids. So it's, to me, it's very encouraging. These programs do work. People want to be in them. And that's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
Hey, I think we've talked about a work release program and maybe that's another use to look at, maybe a change of facility.
Lori. These ain't from our capable advisory board members.
I was just asking her about.
Oh.
What's that? It's the notice for the joint session. It's posted.
Oh, okay.
Which will be immediately following the regular council meeting on Tuesday, May 10th. Taxed it.
Thank you.
Those are the most watched videos.
Anything else, anybody, anybody from the audience? Anybody else? It's good to see you all. Appreciate you coming out. Bob, thank you, as always. Okay?